For a little while, the hope is the state agrees and we're gonna, I'm assuming WashDOT's gonna say it's not our problem, it's not in our right of way, you guys just need to fix it, then it'll become, if we agree to it and the city agrees to it, we put this new storm drain pipe in, and then the battle begins on the who's paying for what. So the hope is that they'll have it, if not done this week, next week, so that they can fill that back up.
Okay, we will do the work to fix things and then argue about who pays for it.
Yes, that's, that is the plan, Kelso and I have agreed, that is the best plan forward, they have the emergency contract with AES out there doing the work for them. Just wanted to bring that to everyone's awareness, especially because I'm sure you'll get questions, and I'm sure it's going to end up in the newspaper.
But what about the bike lane?
They do have that shared use path, and that is a wide road actually there, compared to a lot of others.
Yeah, I think it sounds like we're all kind of in agreement, fix this thing and then we'll hammer out any details afterwards.
Yes. Okay, so the next item I wanted to talk to you all about was the Port of Longview's request for the no parking zone out on Willow Grove. So I have started looking into that, it is a, so prior to this year, during the fishing season, they would, the camp hosts would open up the park at dawn, and the Port of Longview has now decided, no, we don't want them to open it prior to sunrise. Fishermen will show up at dawn, so what they're reporting is there's fishermen parking and it's a dangerous situation. We did go out and take a look at it, it seems that there's some fairly wide shoulders, so as long as you don't have lots of fishermen out there, it should not be an issue, but they have made the request and I wanted to get a feeling from the board, because it's fishing season, so we're looking at two or three weeks now and two or three weeks later, and then the whole issue will go away again. They can pull into the, because these aren't boats, these are the people who like to shorefish, because the boat ramp is open 24/7, so those fishermen could also pull into the boat ramp and use some of that parking and walk over to the shore.
So there, there are people that are not sitting there with trailers behind them and stuff, it's just their vehicle.
It's just a vehicle. So that's the information I have gleaned from talking to various people out there and talking to fishermen within our office.
And the three weeks you mentioned is just to get through the public hearing and all that?
For, so the three, there's two different times when these fishermen come out to fish, and they're like three weeks when the steelhead is open and three weeks when this other is open. I'm not a fisherman, so I'm not good, I don't know what the runs are, they fish off that bank. So, but the three weeks, if we, if you guys wanted to move forward to hold the public hearing, we could bring a notice and it would be a three week from that notice to when the hearing would be.
And three weeks after the notice, we'd have the hearing?
Yes.
And how long after that before we'd be able to post the signs?
I believe it's 48 hours, yeah, it's basically however long it takes us to get the signs up.
I could argue both sides pretty easily.
I, I hear them say it's unsafe, and I don't know what that means. Are we having residents or complaining they can't get by their vehicles? I mean, I don't know what they, they mean by that.
And I'm not sure either, and I have, we have received no complaints from residents to date that this is going on, so.
Well, if we have the hearing, that doesn't mean we have to post the signs anyhow, we just get permission to post the signs?
So basically, the hearing would be to, yes, we're going to make it a no parking or no, we're not, so if we, if the board decides no, they don't want it a no parking zone, then nothing will ever go up. If we say yes, then it needs, it would need to be posted.
But the hearing would give public and people involved a chance to weigh in on this, this thing. So I'd probably be good with a hearing to, to learn a little more about it, because I have, I'd have some questions.
Okay, I will, I believe the paperwork is at 95%, we'll get it up to you guys.
I, I appreciate you pointing out, you know, doing the investigation, so hopefully the port people will come and make their case.
Hopefully, and we will, so when the notice goes out for the hearing, not only does it run in the paper, we will post, when we do no parking, we post the area that would be, become a no parking zone. So everybody driving by would go, oh, why is there a new sign sitting there, and if they stop and read, they can find out what it's for.
Is there, is there an area there where you can have signs that point each other and say?
Yes, we can set it up at each end and do it that way.
But you mentioned that there was, there were spots where there was clearly enough space to park adequately?
There appears to be spots that, obviously Willow Grove's on the dike, that before it dives off to the dike, that it's nine, 10 feet, before it starts diving down.
Do we do any damage to the dike if we're pretty close?
As long as this, it's a gravel surface on top, we're not rutting it, we would not be doing any damage to the dike.
No, I meant now, if we park there.
No, if we park, we would not be, unless, unless the dike for some reason was completely saturated, and then your tires are going to be sinking in anyway.
That was kind of wrong, my question, if you've looked at, can a little grading just make the area so they're off the road, and I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, so what was next on my agenda? Just kind of a quick update on where we are with the I-5 roadwork, that has been a very hot topic in, within our office, with the phone calls and emails, and I'm sure y'all have received some too. We have deployed a lot more signs out there, that are local traffic only, there is a sign, at least one if not two, saying no truck traffic up and over Green Mountain, including a reader board. There is a sheriff deputy who is there for a few hours in the afternoon and turning trucks around. I saw a message that WashDOT had requested that Waze and Google Maps no longer show this as an alternate route, so that true out-of-towners, let's say not somebody who lives here and has done this quarter a lot, wouldn't necessarily know that there was a way over. I have been, so we have several people in our office who commute up from south of this, yesterday apparently it was a 10, 15 minute wait at 5 o'clock, where Monday it was two hours for one of the employees to get home. So we're monitoring it, I don't know if it's going to be like a Monday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday problem, or just because the traffic increases on I-5 on the weekends. There is some concern about the Clark County Fair opens this weekend, and the additional traffic and concerts on that. There is a meeting tomorrow that WashDOT is hosting for their local agency partners to discuss what, if anything, we can do because of the fair.
How, how nonlinear is the load going through there? Let's say, some traffic is discretionary and some you might say isn't really discretionary, I've got a load of apples I gotta get past there. I call that non-discretionary, but then Sunday driving kind of stuff, so discretionary driving, do we know how much it is? Because, you know, those thresholds are very nonlinear.
Yes, and I, I don't know what it is, I mean discretionary is people like me who live up here who decide they want to go to the Woodland Walmart versus the Longview Walmart, let's say, and so, I mean, we're not going to do that for a while.
Just hard for me to explain what ended up being hours delay versus 15 minutes.
So on Fridays in particular in the summer, you have a lot of people who travel in the summer, and so the peak days are Fridays where people are heading from the Seattle area to the Orton Coast, or lots of trips like that. I know Friday night when it was a three hour delay, there was a Chris Stapleton concert at the amphitheater, so you had a lot of people who wanted, trying to get to the concert going through, which would be a discretionary trip, but when you bought those tickets, you didn't know. I spoke to someone who went through Saturday evening and had a much better result than Friday evening, because they were also going to a concert at the amphitheater, and they said the delay was half an hour, so.
But you know what I'm looking for, is the signs, are they the one, do we attribute the improvement to the signs?
No, I'm attributing it to people learn that it's there.
They do have that shared use path, and that is a wide road actually there.
Yeah.
Compared to a lot of others.
Yeah.
I think it sounds like we're all kind of in agreement. Fix this thing and then we'll hammer out any details afterwards.
Yes. Okay, so the next item I wanted to talk to you all about was the Port of Longview's request for the no parking zone out on Willow Grove. So I have started looking into that. It is a... So prior to this year, during the fishing season, they would, the camp hosts would open up the park at dawn. And the Port of Longview has now decided, no, we don't want them to open it prior to sunrise. Fishermen will show up at dawn. So what they're reporting is there's fishermen parking and it's a dangerous situation. We did go out and take a look at it. It seems that there's some fairly wide shoulders, so as long as you don't have lots of fishermen out there, it should not be an issue. But they have made the request and I wanted to get a feeling from the board because it's fishing season, so we're looking at two or three weeks now and two or three weeks later, and then the whole issue will go away again. They can pull into the, because these aren't boats, these are the people who like to shorefish because the boat ramp is open 24/7. So those fishermen could also pull into the boat ramp and use some of that parking and walk over to the shore.
So there are people there, they're not sitting there with trailers behind them and stuff.
No.
It's just their vehicle.
It's just a vehicle. So that's the information I have gleaned from talking to various people out there and talking to fishermen within our office.
And the three weeks you mentioned is just to get through the public hearing and all that?
For, so the three, there's two different times when these fishermen come out to fish. And they're like three weeks when the steelhead is open and three weeks when this other is open. I'm not a fisherman, so I'm not good at, I don't know what the runs are they fish off that bank. So, but the three weeks, if we, if you guys wanted to move forward to hold the public hearing, we could bring a notice and it would be a three week from that notice to when the hearing would be.
And three weeks after the notice, we'd have the hearing?
Yes.
And how long after that before we'd be able to post the signs?
I believe it's 48 hours. Yeah. It's basically however long it takes us to get the signs up.
I could argue both sides pretty easily.
I, I hear them say it's unsafe and I don't know what that means. Are we having residents or complaining they can't get by their vehicles? I mean, I don't know what they, they mean by that.
And I'm not sure either. And I have, we have received no complaints from residents to date that this is going on. So.
Well, if we have the hearing, that doesn't mean we have to post the signs anyhow. We just get permission to post the signs?
So basically, the hearing would be to, yes, we're going to make it a no parking or no, we're not. So if we, if the board decides, no, they don't want it a no parking zone, then nothing will ever go up. If we say yes, then it needs, it would need to be posted.
But the hearing would give public and people involved a chance to weigh in on this?
Yes.
This thing.
That's probably what I'd do.
So I'd probably be good with a hearing to, to learn a little more about it because I have, I'd have some questions.
Okay, I will, I believe the paperwork is at 95%. We'll get it up to you guys.
I, I appreciate you pointing out, you know, doing the investigation. So hopefully the port people will come and make their case.
Hopefully, and we will, so when the notice goes out for the hearing, not only does it run in the paper, we will post, when we do no parking, we post the area that would be, become a no parking zone. So everybody driving by would go, oh, why is there a new sign sitting there? And if they stop and read, they can find out what it's for.
Is there?
Go ahead.
Is there an area there where you can have signs that point each other and say?
No, yes, we can, we can set it up at each end and do it that way.
But you mentioned that there was, there were spots where there was clearly enough space to park adequately?
There appears to be spots that, obviously Willow Grove's on the dike, that before it dives off to the dike, that it's nine, 10 feet before it starts diving down.
Do we do any damage to the dike if we're pretty close?
As long as this, it's a gravel surface on top, we're not rutting it, we would not be doing any damage to the dike.
No, I meant now, if we park there?
No, if we park, we would not be, unless, unless the dike for some reason was completely saturated and then your tires are going to be sinking in anyway.
That was kind of wrong, my question. If you've looked at, can a little grading just make the area so they're off the road? I don't, yeah, I don't know. All right.
Okay, so what was next on my agenda? Just kind of a quick update on where we are with the I-5 roadwork. That has been a very hot topic in, within our office with the phone calls and emails, and I'm sure you all have received some too. We have deployed a lot more signs out there that are local traffic only. There is a sign, at least one, if not two, saying no truck traffic up and over Green Mountain, including a reader board. There is a sheriff deputy who is there for a few hours in the afternoon and turning trucks around. I saw a message that Washtot had requested that Waze and Google Maps no longer show this as an alternate route, so that true out-of-towners, let's say not somebody who lives here and has done this quarter a lot, wouldn't necessarily know that there was a way over. I have been, so we have several people in our office who commute up from south of this. Yesterday, apparently it was a 10, 15 minute wait at 5:00, where Monday it was two hours for one of the employees to get home. So we're monitoring it. I don't know if it's going to be like a Monday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday problem, or just because the traffic increases on I-5 on the weekends. There is some concern about the Clark County Fair opens this weekend and the additional traffic and concerts on that. There is a meeting tomorrow that Washtot is hosting for their local agency partners to discuss what, if anything, we can do because of the fair.
How, how nonlinear is the load going through there? Let's say, some traffic is discretionary and some you, you might say isn't really discretionary. I've got a load of apples I got to get past there. I call that non-discretionary.
Right.
But then Sunday driving kind of stuff. So discretionary driving, do we know how much it is? Because you know, those thresholds are very nonlinear.
Yes, and I, I don't know what it is. I mean discretionary is people like me who live up here who decide they want to go to the Woodland Walmart versus the Longview Walmart, let's say. And so, I mean, we're not going to do that for a while.
Just hard for me to explain what ended up being hours delay versus 15 minutes.
So on Fridays in particular in the summer, you have a lot of people who travel in the summer. And so the peak days are Fridays where people are heading from the Seattle area to the Orton Coast or, you know, lots of trips like that. I know Friday night when it was a three-hour delay, there was a Chris Stapleton concert at the amphitheater. So you had a lot of people who wanted, trying to get to the concert going through, which would be a discretionary trip, but when you bought those tickets, you didn't know. I spoke to someone who went through Saturday evening and had a much better result than Friday evening because they were also going to a concert at the amphitheater and they said the delay was half an hour. So.
But you know what I'm looking for is the, the signs, are they the one, do we attribute the improvement to the signs?
No, I, I'm attributing it to people learn that it's there, are making the decision not to go. I've, the trucks, hopefully the word is getting out that, you know, because they all talk to each other, don't go that way, the sheriff will turn you around. And I think it's just the patterns of the traffic on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it is so much lighter. If you, they have charts on their website about the project and it shows you where your peaks are, and it definitely is much lighter traffic on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday based on their counts, because those are just your commuters in general.
What part of, are they working on the same section of that bridge or where are they at right now?
Oh, they're at the North Fork Bridge, so the one that's just south of Exit 21.
Oh, okay.
And they, so they've got it down to two lanes. And then they'll work on one side and there are also two narrow lanes and then they'll switch over.
Well, then if you're going south and you go over Green Mountain, you got to go through that anyway, right?
Yes, you go over Green Mountain, you get stuck in the gridlock of Woodland, get back on I-5 and still have to go that last little bit. Yes. Because Woodland is apparently gridlocked, even worse than normal because of everybody coming off Green Mountain and trying to get up back onto I-5. Because, because it breaks up so short, so close to Exit 21, Google Maps and all of those last weekend were telling you to keep going, get back onto I-5, not go across the CC Street Bridge and through the center. So my big hope on this is it really helps show the state our weakness in this area and that we can.
Are you pursuing that?
I'm bringing it up to everybody who listens to me at the state.
Do you need a, a resolution from us of any kind and that might help or not?
I don't think at this point, but if I think that it's going to help, I will definitely ask for something. I think it'd be good to get this planning underway because you see how long Exit 21's taking and the, in the bridge, just it'll take decades before we finally get something moving. So the only other public works item besides is the ADA transition plan. I brought that to a workshop earlier this month and was curious if you all had any comments you wanted me to pass along or if I should move it on to the finalization and adoption.
I don't have anything useful.
I didn't have anything.
Okay, I will get the final version from the consultant and I'll bring that back. I know Savannah had other items and unfortunately she still hasn't made it.
There she is.
There she is, perfect timing.
We saw on the news it was some crazy lady trying to push a car.
Oh my gosh. Tow truck showed up, so. Okay, what shall I give?
I finished all the public works items, so we're on to facilities and parks.
Yeah. All that.
Okay, so Savannah Clement, Public Services. Catch my breath. I had sent the board and Kelly just copies of the investment grade audit information. I did bring a couple of paper copies if you weren't able to see that. Good, okay. So we went over this a couple of weeks ago. We had Lauren with Milig here during our presentation. And today I'm here to request permission from the board to move forward with the investment grade audit.
Trying to pull that up.
Take your time.
I have no choice.
I'm literally, I'm out of breath.
It's quite extensive. I mean, I kind of weeded through it a little bit, but it's quite extensive what they're going to look at. And it's a document that will help us in other areas too, right?
Correct. You know, we do have the Ming Report, which we talk about a lot. I believe it was 2014, 15 when that was completed. Some of the information is stale at this point from a facilities and cost standpoint. I think with this investment grade audit, well, it'll do a lot of things, but for me, I'm really looking for the data to back up our decision-making on the products that we use and the mechanical upgrades that we do, and this will provide that.
So you just sent the mail like an hour or two ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been, having looked at it, so there were three attachments? Which attachment should I be looking at?
It should be, it should say IGA V2. I believe it's the middle one. I have a copy too.
The middle one, the IGA proposal?
Yes.
Calis County Hall?
Yes.
Okay. And you were calling that?
Investment grade audit.
Investment grade audit? I don't understand that term.
Agree. I was calling it industrial grade audit. They kindly corrected me, but I mean essentially it's going to be looking at, Commissioner Doll alluded to, a considerable amount of auditing on our facility at the Hall of Justice. They're going to be looking at our goals, design goals, scope goals, goals, engineering, they'll be looking at our contact. Sorry.
I think investment, they use as a fancy term because it gives you some cost savings so you get some returns, and I think they're playing on that a little bit, aren't they?
I would agree. The terminology is, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know English is quite what it used to be.
I, I know it's a lot of information, that's why I really wanted, you know, the board to have it for a couple of weeks. And then if you had additional questions that I can't answer, that I would utilize Milig and their expertise in providing answers, so.
I don't think we have any choice but to go ahead.
Yeah. I don't either. I think it's, it's a document that'll work for us in other areas as, as we're trying to do more with that over there, so.
Okay, so the process is, at this point, I will do a written approval to Milig, letting them know that we can move forward with this. I just want to let you guys know you shouldn't have this document that you'll, that you'll need to sign at this point. It's ultimately rolled into the costs of construction if we decide to go that route. If we don't, that's, we would just pay for it, you know, à la carte or however you want to.
How much, how many dollars for this stage? 72, 76?
No, this one's $248,800. It's on the very last page. Appendix one.
248,800, yeah.
And they tried to figure out a percentage of the total cost of construction to determine these, the IGA.
Yeah.
I'm happy that it will also produce approximately 60% engineering plans as well.
That was my next question.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that out of this as well.
And so a choice we'll have once the report's out, if we go through, if we stay with Milig, then we get a, a consideration.
Meaning a consideration?
Because we've paid already for.
Oh, right. Is that, do you understand that too? Am I answering correctly, you think, with his question? Sorry.
So, excuse me, so I'm guessing what we get the benefit of staying with Millie would be they did the 60% plans, so they'd be willing to build off of them. A lot of times when you have 60% plans and you go with someone else, they kind of back up and give you more alternatives, and so you pay for part of that 60% design twice.
Exactly my question. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Okay. Again, next step in the process, I will move forward with Milig, let them know that I have an okay to move forward on this.
So this is going to be one of those rare circumstances where a rule of thumb isn't really going to apply in the sense of, take this 248 times 10 and that's what it's going to cost us to do it? Answer's probably not. It's going to be much more than that.
I think, I think so, yes.
In fact, much more is typically a factor of five to the moon?
Didn't they have some rough estimates in there?
Again, yes, rough estimate of eight to nine million. That was from eight to nine million, which, which we've approved through the facilities' capital improvement plan. And again, our, our plan is to allocate the $1 million from ARPA funds and then also we would do 1 million per year in debt until it's paid off.
I'm a little doubtful of that 8 million estimate because it's based on a whole bunch of assumptions that they haven't checked.
Exactly, and that's where this is going to help answer a lot of those cost questions.
Yeah. So you're probably right, that, that's probably going to change.
That probably?
I would guess that's probably going to change.
Exactly. And it's going to change again based off of the feedback we give them with board direction on where we go from this IGA, what decisions we make on products and which improvements we would like to do and so on.
And could you refresh for me this, Gope here doesn't include redoing the interior?
Not a cosmetic, from a cosmetic approach. We will be doing electrical, we're replacing all the panels, but not like an interior remodel. There, that won't be done.
Right, the courtrooms will be the courtrooms.
Correct.
With their current problems, other than electrical and.
And yeah, heating and cooling. But what other problems are there really? Kid, I'm sorry, that was, that was a joke. If any of them are online, they'll be, I'm sure, enlighten us on the other problems. But I will say again, in this process, and Lauren kind of talked about it last time as well, is that there are all other options for upgrades if we choose to go that direction. I've been hesitant to even go down that road until we know what these harder costs are on the heating, cooling and electrical. Then we can start talking about, you know, LED lighting upgrades, which we would really like to do for several reasons, but we don't want to go down that road until we can figure out what the beefy parts of those costs are going to be, for lack of a better word. So with that, I will go ahead and move forward with Millie, let them know I have a, a yes and I'll be back in front of you, I'm sure, several more times to get feedback, so.
I did notice from the Gant chart that we're going to be into January, well, not quite January, we'll get it done in December.
I know you noticed that.
Yes.
Well, we're not calling this one a legacy project at least, so. So the other items I have relate to the Hall of Justice. I did mention the staff meeting today, Commissioner Mortensen was present. We are working from a facilities standpoint on, doing some remediation, we'll call it, at the rooftop penthouse is what it's called. It essentially houses all of the old HVAC system for the jail, which isn't operable, but it was identified as a problem area that needed to be cleaned. So that's actually happening today. It started yesterday. And so hopefully that will help mitigate some of the concerns. The bigger piece that we are working hard on is identifying that water intrusion source in that north stairwell. So the board recalls, we had a roofing company come out, identify any roof leaks, you know, kind of that low hanging fruit to identify any obvious sources of intrusion. We had the gutters cleaned and some patchwork done. And now we're moving on with an envelope specialist to identify, okay, how is this getting in this stairwell that should be watertight? So we're working with them and our consultant that does the air quality testings to remediate that. So once the water intrusion's found, we will start with that remediation to get that hallway opened up for those folks that utilize it daily. So that's where we're at on that. Any more questions on the Hall of Justice and remediation? OPD, good news on that front, I think. We've toured several times with Ian and his team. And I think they're, they're, I didn't want to use the word excited, but I think they are looking forward and kind of happy with what they can get at the annex. We'll be utilizing the compass space, which is that lower section. If you enter the building, it's off to the right downstairs. We'll also be utilizing the old facilities maintenance office and as well as the COG office that's currently being housed with COG. They will be moving out. We talked to them, we're trying to talk to them every couple of weeks on progress or if they have any needs from us, assist. So they do plan on getting out before, probably before December from what I understand. And they're working with a local realtor and identifying some locations. So Ian and his team are pretty happy and we're moving forward on a plan to get them over there as soon as we can. We will probably phase it, because we have open space now, to kind of move some of their groups that can move together sooner than later. So that's our, kind of our plan of action there.
And because we're on a month-to-month in the current situation, there's no notice or anything needs to be given.
We are trying, sorry.
We probably want to be respectful.
Correct. We're, we're, we're trying to communicate as best as we can, but you're correct, we don't necessarily have a timeframe. We're trying to make sure that we're out the same time that we are, we're hoping to get in by December with a kind of COGS assurance, like, hey, we think we can get out of here before then even. And if they can't, we understand, but that's our goal. And I think they're on the same page. And we will probably, sorry. We will probably come to the board in the near future again with some, some questions and feedback. We will have to probably make some requests for cubicles and, and you know, some office reconfigurations for the new space there, but ultimately it will still be overall of cost savings. Offender Services, so I don't know if we brought this to the board recently. Currently we have four staff members from Offender Services, which is, they report to Marin upstairs on the third floor of the jail. So if you've been up there, right off the elevator is like kind of an enclosed office, and that's Offender Services. And from what I understand with the court process, sometimes clients will come straight from, you know, the court services up to Offender Services to do whatever has been required of them. And I think you're well aware that the, that third floor does not have adequate heating and cooling, kind of based off of what we've talked about here recently. So in the summer, it can be up to 90 up there. In the winter, you can imagine it can get very cold. It's not suitable space, I feel, and no for office staff. So we've been working with several elected officials who've been very collaborative with us and helping us, recognizing like, oh yeah, they, they need to come out of there, you know? So working with Stacy in the clerk's office, Brad, the sheriff's office, and then Ryan with the PA's office, they're utilizing, they're getting rid of between the three of them, four office spaces for us to use, which has been very helpful for, for us in working with us on that. So try to thank them this morning, thank them, I'll thank them again here, that we can hopefully get that going and get them out of that space.
It's, the offices will be right next to each other?
Yes, they'll be in a core area. The space we're hoping to utilize at the hall, without getting too specific, is when you enter the security to the left and then directly through the right, there's an employee hallway. There's actually a storefront window there. So we're hoping to utilize that office and the subsequent offices behind it. So they're all one, one public facing and three behind there.
The storefront office, that's the, not the records?
No, no, it's kind of hidden, that's like, you know, the old cafe area?
Yeah.
It's actually that hallway directly by the cafe area. There's an office there with a public facing window and entrance.
When I walk in from the main entrance, it's that hallway's perpendicular?
Nope, it's to the left and then directly to the right. It's a kind of a T shape.
There's a double door there that is rather large?
Nope. Different, we're talking two, we're talking two different things.
We're talking Calis County.
We're talking Calis County. So we're on, we're on the same page. It is a tiny hallway that's not, is only accessible to, I believe, maybe the PA's office and records staff use that as a separate entrance. It has its own keypad, so public can't get back there. It's a single door. I can, I can, when we come back, just so you have an idea.
It's, it's okay.
It's kind of a hidden little niche, is why it's kind of hard to describe where it's at. So, but we're hoping to, to move that sooner than later, so. Any questions on Hall of Justice or facilities items before I go to parks? Any questions on Hall of Justice or Facilities items before I go to parks? Monday, Alyssa and I came to request board approval for the R C O. We got it documented in our minutes and I sent a form to Kelly, just letting her know I'd be bringing it today. We do need Chair signature on the form now that we've gotten board approval, so I'm hoping that's okay if Commissioner Dahl signs that, Chairman Dahl. So that's the one item on R C, R C O. And then Commissioner Dahl had sent me some information regarding parks vandalism information. This had also been discussed at our Monday open meeting, so I wanted to bring some information. I don't see that anybody's here from the public, but I did get some anecdotal information from Alyssa just to try to give me some estimated time and cost material just over the last year on kind of what we see in vandalism costs and time. And she also included some pictures of some recent vandalism, so I did print some out for the board just to review. But essentially she did say, this is bad, but it's the worst I've ever seen it. It's been in recent time in the last year. So in the twenty years she's been working for parks to some capacity, this is the worst she's seen it. So she didn't want to, she didn't want this to have, be the general rule of thumb for the board. She doesn't think that this is normal, and it has lessened up over the last few months. So just, she estimates approximately seventy-two hundred dollars a year in graffiti problems, which includes painting over the graffiti, labor, replacing broken bathroom partitions, toilets, sinks, et cetera. So I just want to hand that out to you because you did have a public question.
Thank you. Thank you. They even graffitied inside the urinal? Wow. What happened to the sinks?
They were removed from the wall. This could have been after the cleanup was done. And she, you know, as far as cleanup of the porcelain, and then she took pictures. But it looks like these are two different stalls, so the top stall looks like it's from maybe a male or female bathroom, and the other one is from the, obviously the the men's restroom. And but one thing this did kind of bring up to us internally is when you ask specific questions about tracking costs, we currently don't track, we don't do project costing in parks. You know, we don't do it in a lot of divisions, but when we start asking these types of questions and wanting to be able to track, we're looking at setting them up in project costing to be able to identify how much time they're spending at certain parks, what type of labor they're performing in activities, and then trying to track the costs on stuff like this, so.
Probably in the past, it was never prevalent enough to worry too much about.
Right.
Kind of a sad state that you have to look at it a little bit now.
Yeah, it wasn't something we were trying to track necessarily.
Yeah, the thing that catches my eye is a gang graffiti. We really need to be sure that we don't let the gangs grow around here, so if this is an indication they're growing, I hope the sheriff's office can do something about that.
In, in her, her message here, it, it says they haven't had any issues since May, which is probably indicative of somebody going away somewhere, whether it's jail or moved away, but.
Somebody's in timeout?
Some, somebody's not around or hasn't been since May.
I was just thinking we ought to at least give lessons. Parks and Recreation gives lessons on stuff, on how properly to do graffiti and make it attractive.
Yes.
That, that's funny, because I was thinking the same thing. I go, this person needs to go back to art school.
I'm worried about you.
They're not as skilled as some we've seen on some train cars even.
Watch trains go by, they're much higher quality.
Yeah. So that is all I have. Again, I apologize for coming in late. I think hopefully we covered everything, but if you guys have any more questions for us.
Well, we all sat here and decided nobody can afford teenagers, so.
Yeah, that's true. I, I will say that the the morals of a, of a manual transmission is you can
Yeah.
You can
We could have We could have pushed started or at least got it into neutral to pull it out of the intersection, would have been nice.
It was a manual transmission?
No, it's not. Had it have been, we could have had a lot more options.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just picked it up from the dealership, it was getting fixed, which is the worst part.
Manual transmissions anymore, you're not going to get stolen probably, because.
Yeah, most of them can't drive them.
Now, my Jeep is built with, I can, I can just put the whole thing and it just rolls.
Yeah.
You know, it's four towing type things.
Oh.
But normal rigs, you don't have that.
Is your, your Jeep an automatic?
Yeah. But it has a setting with the
Yeah.
four by stick that just puts everything in neutral and just lets it roll.
Not my Subaru.
No.
Honda's neither, just for the record. Okay, well, thank you. All right, we'll be back next week or week after.
Did you need that sign?
Yes.
ARPA coming in. Right here.
Oh yeah, that's right, she had the, those stylistic heels. I'm thinking for shoe design, we ought to have heels that look like those canes people have now that have the fore claw, yeah, so you can have a very thin shaft. I think there's potential forming in the fashion industry. But I think without Savannah, I'd probably fail. Did he stop laughing?
Yeah, we have ARPA coming in at two thirty, so we could just recess till then.
Well, it, it, there's something, something we need to talk about sometime. Remember the junkyard
Yeah.
quest? I, I went and spent some time talking to Andrea and Tracy and it's actually if I get up at the very high level, we've got ordinances that have no teeth. So the question is, do we want to have laws that we cannot enforce? And I claim that that's always a bad thing. And in this case, do we want to have the law at all? Because we're going to have to change something. We're going to have to improve the ordinance in such a way that it has teeth and well defined, but and you have to be careful there because it will be abused, or we just eliminate the ordinance that whatever you do in the county as long as it doesn't pollute your neighbor with oil or smell or something.
I, so it just re, re goes back to like environmental damage type things?
Right, right. And my, I, I feel strongly both ways actually, but I think we ought to not have laws that we cannot enforce. So we have to decide whether we want to enforce that one. The thing that makes it complicated is you, you and I have talked enough here to know that it's your property, you ought to be able to use it as you see fit within bounds.
Right.
It's defining the within bounds.
It's defining within bounds, and that's hard to do in any type of ordinance.
And when we're talking about like a junkyard, there, there was a tendency in this discussion to talk about, well, how do you define a junker car, you know, and this and that, and I, I I think what you say, if, if the registration of the vehicle, if there is anything that resembles a vehicle and has a registration potential, if it's not registered, we'll call that a junk, junk vehicle. In other words, we can't go busy saying, well, it's a Hulk, but it has no engine. You know, as soon as we start discussing details like that, we're going to end up somebody circumventing it because we'll forget some detail.
So. And is there, if you don't have that particular ordinance, is there something else that kicks in if, if you become, I don't know, lack of a better word, a public nuisance or your stuff starts encroaching on other people? Is there probably something already in place?
There. Yeah, what, what we'd have to do, and I think if the lawyers paid attention, they might, we're, we're paying attention to this, they might be horrified, but I am okay with deciding that we want to put somewhat draconian stuff, like you will get a warning of some kind or something, but then you're facing jail time and and financial, you know, ten thousand dollar fine or something like that. We, every time we, we let people get by with doing something that any normal citizen would say, yeah, they ain't right. It may be legal, but it's not right. We're hurting everybody.
Well, then I would agree. If we got ordinance, it's just like having a contract to me sitting out there that doesn't accomplish anything. You need to fix it. You make it, you need to make it right.
Yeah.
So we either make ordinance work or we just do away with the ordinance.
That's, that's the bottom line there, yeah. So if you're in agreement with that, when I talk to them, I'll say, I think they're left with the idea that they're going to try and think about how they might craft something without getting stuck in the weeds about what defines junk or not junk.
No, I'm, I'm, I think we should take a look at that. I agree with you.
Okay. Well, we could have a break then. Or start.
Well, I think there, I see there. Are, are you okay starting a little early? You good with that? Okay, why don't we do that? We'll just move right in. So this is going to be the abbreviated version, huh?
Yeah.
I actually like, like these because it always is a good reminder and a good update of where we sit on things, so I always appreciate them.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. Camilla Eastman, Chief Accountant with the Auditor's Office. Before you, we have the quarterly update for ARPA. I did try making the writing a little bit bigger so you could see it a little more clear. It's pretty tiny, a lot of info.
I'm offended.
It was for me. I, I'm blind without the contacts. Okay, so we do have some remaining in both revenue loss and direct obligation. More indirect obligation than revenue. But we are close to having it one hundred percent obligated at this point. I know we mentioned it last time, but Beacon Hill did have a potential upcoming project that they wanted to request. We haven't heard any additional on that at this point in time.
Okay.
Anything? Yeah, so no further updates on that.
I just remember that water tower from the twenties or something that they, they utilize.
Yeah.
Looks like they're, if that's them, the work going on West Side, do you know if that's them working on the, the one we gave them?
They did start, so I would assume so, yes.
It looks like they're redoing that line, so.
We did get another reimbursement request from City of Woodland, so they're making headway now. I expect another one shortly. And speaking of obligations, we did bring this up at the last meeting that we will have M O U's come around for all county departments for projects that have already been approved. So this was approved by our P A office and it has been dispersed to departments, so we're waiting on signatures. Once we get those, they'll be on consent agenda for the board since the, they're all previously approved projects. This is just what we need to call it officially obligated.
Okay.
So those should be coming shortly. Outside of that, we don't have a lot of updates other than where we're at with our obligations. We've had a couple different areas be interested in ARPA funds, but nothing concrete at this point in time.
If it goes past the, the time, is this one of those funds where this eight forty-five goes back?
Yes.
We can send it back?
Yes.
Random questions. By the way, yeah, this is nice. The, under revenue loss column. Where did it go? Oh, the I, the I T. Did we really spend one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on Duo? Apparently. Anyhow, that's neither here nor there at the moment. So.
Those I T totals are over the course of two years as well. Yes. That's, this is two years' worth of reimbursements to I T.
Okay, so the total. I'm, I'm curious because you've got amount awarded and then the you haven't, that hasn't been spent. What's the mechanism at this point? Does that go back to, you can award that to other people, right?
So as of now, that's obligated to I T. They have until twenty twenty-six to spend those funds. We just.
Is that something we can talk about or not? Or it's already done?
It would be part of the M O U's that just went out. But I believe the board has the power to pull back if they wanted to.
That, that's kind of the question.
Yeah.
Because we never know whether there's going to be a high priority something that comes along. Don't like to do that, but I just want to know what flexibility we have.
Yeah.
And Woodland Exit Twenty-One, have you kept in contact with them?
Yes, so we've been in regular contact. Their reimbursement requests have started to increase. They have been really great at communicating, so we haven't had one issue.
Okay.
That's quite a turnaround, isn't it?
Yes, yes, they seem to have a great team over there.
And a hundred thousand from the City of Kelso, what, can you refresh my memory?
That is for the Labs and Lassie's Park to make it ADA.
Yeah, okay. And we also committed to them, maybe that's in the other column, for their
Oh, the senior housing, whatever they're calling that.
Something like that. Is that, that's on here?
Which one is that? I'm sorry. The senior housing?
Yeah. Or it.
Yeah, I don't.
Maybe that was.
I don't believe.
Maybe that was document recording piece.
Oh, maybe.
I think that was out of the document recording.
But you would know about that also, right?
Hear of it, hear of it.
We had you scrambling for it.
Uh, yeah, you really did. Frantically looking at my sheet.
That's the other twenty million.
Yeah.
So based on your view, you don't see any issues that you'd want to alert us about?
Not at this time. We do need to allocate that remaining 845 before the end of 2024 so that we can be in full obligation.
Which I think the, the biggest concern would be to focus on direct obligation. The revenue loss is something that we have the ability to claim governmental wages and make sure we do keep those funds within the county, whether that's general fund or what the board wants to do after that.
I got you.
Yeah. Um, but the direct obligation, we do need to get into contract fairly soon.
That's the one that's in, if you want to call it jeopardy of being sent back.
Yep.
And, and, and I agree, I'd like to use them, but I'm, I don't like to use them to the point where I just give it to anyone.
Yeah.
Thing. I'd like it to be something that does something.
Now, with that, where are we with respect to the juvenile stuff? Would this be a player in that at all?
Are we talking about the, like the washer and dryer?
The washer and dryer and.
No. And I think we, it looks like we're going to have a date for that to, to do that. Looking at restructuring or remodeling part of the juvenile facility to handle some mental health and, and abuse situations for adolescents. I don't, I don't know how this would fit in.
Do they stay there or is it more of a meeting?
No, they stay. It has rooms.
Okay. There's guidance on congregate settings. It mostly touches on things though, like HVAC and.
Public health measures.
Yeah, it's more along those lines as opposed to, we can't just go redo a facility.
Right.
Um, so we can look into it. Off the top of my head, I'm going to assume that it won't qualify though, but we'll definitely look and give you a, an answer.
Well, whatever we do there, we'll, we'll need.
It will have some HVAC, it will have some, have some equipment.
Yeah.
Adjustments. I don't know the total scope of that right at the moment, but it will.
I don't either. It just plays into your, your statement that we don't want to spend it just to spend it.
Right, exactly. I don't. And we also.
And that's end of this year, it needs to be allocated.
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, unless Congress does something.
Yes, yeah. It's still being pushed. There's still a possibility, but we haven't heard much, so.
So for the direct obligation money on the existing water sewer projects that we have already obligated some funds to, there is an additional $2.4 million coming out of the water fund, water sewer fund to cover those projects. So th- those projects can certainly absorb whatever is left in the direct obligation.
Yep.
Yeah. That's good.
We could reach out and set up another workshop here in the next few weeks and invite those that have maybe reached out or we know Beacon Hill had some projects. Maybe we can gather some and get a presentation together for the boards. You guys kind of have an option and then we always have a water sewer to fall back on, worst case.
Well, the thing I'm confident on was what we just heard from our county engineer. For infrastructure, we have no, we can't satisfy the demand.
Yeah, so. I think just knowing that, I'm. That'd be a good place for it to be.
Yeah.
So we won't let it go back.
You can wipe that perspiration off your brow.
And I didn't even run across the bridge to get here.
But you don't have heels on, do you?
No, I don't. My legs are too old to wear heels.
You're not going to live this one down, are you? In the Carol's Water Association, looks like there was some leftover money?
They, that's an active project, so they continue to send us reimbursement requests. But yes, they have not spent their entire amount yet.
Do you expect they will?
Yes, just in communications with them, they fully intend to.
For the project that is completed?
For the drinking water improvement project?
I forget what their, they, they had to drill several wells and, and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, it is part of that. The contract is complete, but not the project.
Well, that's what completed means.
Yeah, it says contract complete, that it's all signed around.
Oh.
We had many.
Contract complete means that you've got the paperwork done.
Yes, we had many contracts out with departments and with Woodland, Carol's, that some were still pending, some were complete, so we're trying to keep track of when it was fully obligated.
Okay, thank you. I'm always amazed and mystified when somebody says you've got this kind of money that they took forever to respond like City of Woodland on that is like, really? You don't want this 2.6?
That was, yes, that went on for a while.
I think about a year or if not longer.
A little over a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. That PPE in countrywide, in the direct qualifications?
Yes, so that goes across multiple departments. We are working on communicating with departments on where they're at with that at this point in time. But that one is countywide, yes.
Okay, countywide means departments of the county or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's from when ARPA was first awarded to the county and COVID was in full swing.
Right.
We dedicated $100,000 to just any PPE for departments to claim.
At, at one point in time, we had fairly large supply of stuff.
Yes.
Where is that?
Where is the physical? That's a great question. I don't, that I don't know.
Because I'm, I would suspect that we really don't have a demand for PPE.
It did change guidelines in places like the jail, the sheriff's office. So we had, those are the main departments we've been in communication with because it would still fall under these guidelines.
Your expectation isn't that we'll use all 100K though, is it?
No, I wouldn't assume so.
So at some point, at some point, uh, you'll, we have until the end of this year, so you will,
True.
September or October, you'll start to get itchy and say, we need to reallocate this?
Yes. Yes, and it has been discussed too, once we get past the obligation date of December 31st, 2024, that funds could be re-obligated for another qualifying project. So I can look at the guidance for that as well and see exactly where we're at with that because that was a newer guidance that came out.
Got it. Okay.
So then you could take, if we figure more than you're ever going to spend that much, you could take some of that and put it elsewhere?
Yes.
Yes.
So in the case, in this one in particular, there's no, is there an MOU you're going to have to each department about that asks for PPE?
We didn't do assigned depart, uh, departments for the countywide one. We probably should put that one in, in a MOU, I would assume with OFM on behalf of the county.
I love your TLAs.
I know, it's starting to confuse me. Just to get that into an MOU so we have it. And then again, we can, we have the ability to true it up later and.
Yeah.
Allocate elsewhere.
Do you have a way to, uh, yeah, you do indirectly. Okay, never mind. The $1 million for the facilities department?
Those were awarded for HVAC projects. I actually do not, I think the last time I spoke to Sean.
Probably we don't want you to lose your breath again.
The $1 million from direct obligation is for the HVAC overhaul that we just discussed earlier. That is the $1 million that we've requested the board approve.
For the hall.
For the entire, yes, towards the entire project. Since I'm up here and we're talking about potentially unallocated funds, I'll do my push for Parks Department, for our legacy play structure. If there, I know I've been bugging Kaylee and Camilla and others that if we could be a Plan B. So I just want to put that out there again to the board that that is still something that we would come forward with and make a request on. We can only get that funding from the revenue replacement. We cannot get the parks funding from direct obligation. What do we, direct obligation, direct? Yeah, the other side, the other part.
So, so how do we, how do, how does the board know? Well, the million dollars back on the facilities, that's for, that's allocated now for work that will be completed in 25.
We're hoping 25, correct. These MOUs that we're engaging in will obligate the funds by the end of the year. So that we're safe on that.
Right now, it's a, for which, it's all HVAC?
Hall of Justice HVAC specifically. The mechanicals that will be acquiring, purchasing, that will be installed is what we're hoping to spend that money on because of the lead time.
And that's what you talked about earlier.
Correct.
With, with, with the Milig.
Yes.
So we've got some of the dominoes coming along.
Yes.
And this is one example of where we know what we're going to do with it and it's allocated, not going to be spent, so even though I don't see a dollar spent on it yet. And in this case, the 200 and some odd thousand for doing the IGA doesn't come out of this amount of money.
Um, I wasn't, we weren't planning on it because there's some gray area there. It's not specific to HVAC, so I, so no.
Safe is fine because you'll spend it here or you'll spend.
We will spend it. So in a situation where we didn't go forward with Milig or we weren't doing HOJ upgrades, we would come back to the board, working with the Auditor's Office and say, we still want this money for HVAC. It's just going to be at this location. Can we get that approved? And then go through that re- allocation process.
Where do we stand on Riderwood?
Hey, if we keep doing this, we can really get some exercise in.
Workplace wellness?
You just happen to be prepared for it, huh?
I, I don't like being predictable. I'm offended.
I try to be prepared for pretty much anything you're going to ask, but I don't always manage. Yep, steal a few, share the wealth. So I made up my quarterly report update for the projects. You specifically asked for Riderwood. We are, we've received DOH comments and are addressing those. We are at 90% plans with the stated goal of advertising in September.
This is adding the additional storage capacity?
Yes, this is adding the additional raw water reservoir. We did happily stumble across that we could make it larger than what we originally thought. So we're going to get some additional storage. We found a way to get additional height on it. So we're really looking forward to getting this project underway. The consultant we're working with, he's been working hard and he knew these deadlines of December 31st. And so let me tell you, he's been pushing us to keep up with him, so.
And do we have ARPA money in there?
For Riderwood, yes. We, Riderwood has some ARPA money and it has some USDA rural funding on it that I'm trying to get the bow tied on that so we can get that agreement all in place and get all of this running. So the current estimate I have for Riderwood is $2.1 million. There's $900,000 of ARPA money.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah, $1 million of the, that USDA, which are the Congress delegated, direct delegated to us and then $200,000 from the water sewer fund.
That's the fund that is fed by every monthly bill that gets paid?
Yes, that is given, or it's what the rate payers pay for their services.
And the $94,000 under, that's paying basically for your engineering consulting?
Yes, this is engineering consultant and that's the bills that we've paid through the end of June. I know the couple bills just came across my desk that were payments for work in May and June. So those will be processed and included in the next quarter.
Uh, this, is this a open air?
No, there will be a lid on it.
What we have now there is open air, right?
The.
There's a pond or something?
That's the sewage lagoon.
Oh, not the same?
No.
Thank the Lord, somebody got that.
No, there, there are plenty of cities and areas that have open water lagoons and that are for wa, for water after treatment, but then they usually have to dose them as going out. I can tell you stories. When I was a consultant, I had, I did a project for a city not in this state that had a issue with hitting fecals in the system. And so we modeled their system to try and figure out where it was coming from. And it turned out somebody had left the roof, the access, human access, and they had ducts in one of their water reservoirs. So it, yeah, because that wasn't set up for the open air and the after treatment.
Do you know if Riderwood's had any problems this year yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, good.
It's too early for it, right?
Yeah, it's, you, we'll, we'll find, we'll see how August goes. Yeah, that nice little drink, if we get a few more of those, those always help through the summer.
Things go as planned, they won't have to worry about this next year.
Yeah, next year we'll have this.
I won't.
I know you won't.
I won't live that one down either.
So especially in the road projects, you'll see more expenses because in the next quarter, because the Hazeldale Road slide repair, this is also a public service announcement, the Hazeldale Public Slide Repair, they will be mobilizing out onto site next week with work starting on the 12th. It'll be one lane of traffic. So that is one of our direct reimbursement ones. The Hazeldale Slide of $635,000. It's for a million dollar project. And the Top Rock Creek Bridge, I know that's another one that people are interested in out on Tower Road. I received. I received, uh, seven.
And, uh, I think you can sum that up of, we either do something that has teeth or we don't do anything at all. We just eliminate that.
That'll be a board decision.
That would be a board decision, but I think we need from you and Andrea, whoever, uh, a stab at how you would make it be a reasonably effective ordinance.
Correct.
That's, is your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It sounds like right now it's just towards taking up space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So she was gonna start working on it, so I, that was where she left it, I believe. I'm here, uh, Tracy Jackson, Building and Planning. I'm here today. We don't have a quorum for our August Planning Commission meeting. When we went from nine to seven, we were worried that quorum during especially summer months, we may have issues getting enough members there. We lost Joel Ruplee, um, and we don't have a seventh member appointee. So if we, the board could reappoint someone or do a press release to appoint us, um, a District Two member to replace Mr. Ruplee. And then if we could get a seventh member, um, appointee, then we would.
I've tried a couple times.
I know you have. I know you have. So my thoughts were, and it was mentioned, and this is totally up to the board, but we have, um, it would be like a citizen at large type position. Could be staff, could be citizen, but maybe Mr. Suter. He's, he had been on the Planning Commission for thirty years, and when we went from nine to seven, just a thought. I know he's still interested in doing.
Well, if you have a citizen at large, I have another person too.
Okay, and we could, like, that would be great. We just need an appointee. So I don't know if you want that as part of the press release from the board's office, but we do need a, we need a warm body.
Yeah, because I, I, it's sitting vacant, but people probably don't look at that very much from, just from District Two.
Right.
So you, you're suggesting a District Two and then a citizen at large?
To replace the seventh member, whatever, yes, we need it.
How many do we have now? Just five?
Yes. And then we have two that are not available on the, the August meeting.
Yeah, so the feedback, uh, I know there was, there were people that were concerned over the dropping from nine down. Have we? Have we had trouble because of that?
No. This is just the first meeting, just because of the summer months with summer vacation, we don't have the extra bodies in there.
And just in general, I favor, uh, Planning Commission is a pretty important vehicle for us, and I, we, we, we tend to think, at least, I, I believe the expectation was that somebody on there forever be, has become an expert. I kind of think the experts are there. We want, I want, until December, I, I want as many public people just saying what they want for their quality of life around here that the Planning Commission gets involved in. So I don't feel any allegiance to reappointing any particular individual.
No, I, I'd agree with that, but, but I'm okay if we want to send out a, a thing to try and get somebody.
We would, we would like to fill the two positions, please, yeah. So if we can, if, I can, we can get the clerk to, that would be fantastic, and just see what kind of interest we get, and then we'll go from there. But one of them has to be District Two, and the other one could be at large.
When's the meeting that you're gonna?
Uh, third weekend, August.
And at, at the moment, you don't have a quorum?
We do not have a quorum.
Yeah.
So we will be canceling.
If, if we appoint another two people, you will very likely have a quorum?
Yes.
So there's seven, and right now you have five?
Yes.
And?
Right now, we only have three attending, so I need two more.
Say, there must be some from the five that are.
There's two that are not available, yes.
So that.
This would fill that void.
Yeah.
But it'll take the week to get the memo out and, or advertised on the daily news schedule. So we're probably looking at no meeting in August, but we will have a larger one in September. We have two applications that are coming up.
Okay, do you know what I'm thinking? Remember you said, I made a comment, you said, yes, I was thinking that too. This time I'm thinking, we have a captive audience. Well, not here at the jail.
When's that term up? So thank you. That was all I had. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous? Or I, I will report because I reported in here that with Mike's Health, Public Works Health, and whoever was working on it, the one property I reported in, yeah, Willow Grove that.
Oh, yeah.
We found it. They were, worked out a temporary fix so these people can build their house. But the permit fix, they'll need to work on that, and I think their title company needs to help them quite a bit on that, because they kind of put them in a land lock thing on that.
Yeah, hope, hopefully they're, if we can nail that down for them, I, I'm not sure what, but I'm concerned that things change.
Yeah.
And you don't want them to build a house and not be able to get to it.
Well, at the very, very least, it would give us time to put that up for auction, that tax title piece up for auction again.
Got it.
And then they could bid on it and do that, although I would say their title company needs to help them with that because they kind of put them in that situation, but that's between them.
How large a piece of property is, is theirs?
Fourteen acres.
And it's on the riverside of the, oh, no, that's inside the.
Yeah.
Inside the dyke, right?
Yeah. And then there, the tax title piece is, I want to say, three acres, maybe a little more. But it, it just shuts that hole, it takes that whole area, so they have no access to the road.
I assume they really looked into how much their septic is a challenge there?
I would assume so.
That is their.
They're having a company build the, build the home, and they were ready to start, so they must, you pretty much have that stuff in place by the time you do that, right? Where's Tracy? Septic permit and all that stuff, so.
Before somebody can start to build, will, they've got to get approval from EHU for septic and w- 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 potable water?
Yes, they also have to have access, and that's the hangup.
That was the hangup.
So Adair is building their home and they are delivering product, but they just, I, I know there's been a lot more communication even today on that particular incident and situation, so.
How are they accessing the property now?
There's a gate.
There is a gate on someone else's property?
Through the tax title property.
Okay.
There's, yeah, it's, 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 it's a fluid, um.
Yeah.
Situation. We're working on it, though.
What, in, in that area, uh, does the, is there any percolation?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. And it's on the slough side of Willow Grove.
Is it?
Yeah, the slough side.
Yeah.
On the slough side?
I believe so, yes, yep. Yep.
So if I go into Willow Grove and rather than going to the park, I make the right turn.
It's straight across from the park on the other side.
And I'm going up that road, it's somewhere on my right side, on the slough side?
No, other side.
It's in, inside the hollow.
It's on the loop.
But on that side.
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay. Yeah, there's not, the, you're, you drop off from the, from the tarmac into. Anything else? I don't have anything else. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands or any. Good deal. We will adjourn.